Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the Utilities Commission meeting to order. Time is 7:30, 2:00 P.M. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the Utilities Commission meeting of October 1, 2018.
I'll move that we accept the Utility Commission meeting for October the 1st as submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record show we unanimously approve the minutes. Total cash on hand this evening for the Utilities Commission is $2,132,114.94. And within that fund is $806,000 for capital funds for specific capital projects.
That's very, very nice.
I already asked him if he would make a loan to the town.
I feel like...
But he declined for the time, for the present time. Our next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move to pay the bills as submitted.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record show we unanimously agree to pay the bills. We're moving right along to the always scintillating...
Yes.
Often imitated, but never duplicated, Lobstikes with the Utilities Commission.
We gave a tour over at the wastewater plant a few days ago to some of the college students. They really enjoyed it. They appreciated it. They got a lot of information out of it. We finished the piping at the water plant. I don't know how many details I gave you before. We had, well, two had stopped working. So we got Earth Data in to pull the pump out and put a new one in. Couldn't pull it out. So we had to dig it up and remove the entire pit list. When we dug it up, the storm drain was leaking into the hole where the pit list was at. So we had to repair the storm drain pipe and then go back to the pit list and get the pit list out and pull the whole thing up. Couldn't get back in because the ground was so soft with all the water to put the new pit list on. So this has been dragging on for about two months. We've been going with this. The new pit list is in. The new pump and motor are in the well. Now we gotta take them back out because we're only getting 70 gallons a minute instead of 140 gallons a minute. Had them video the well and the well is 80% obstructed. So if you look at the video, as you go down, there's a screen that's about 30 foot long. Only about 20% of the holes are visible.
Wow.
So they're gonna come in and rehab it this week and then we can drop it back in. In the process of doing well, too, there was a wet spot that's always been on the ground on the right-hand side of the building. And we determined that there was a leak that must be coming from number two. So we dug up all along where the pipe would come and tie into that well header that collects all the wells and takes it up the hill. And we couldn't find it. Reason we couldn't find it is well number two was running under the slab of the building where it tied into the pipe header that collects all the other wells and runs underneath of the building. So somewhere under the slab, we had a leak in the piping. Well, it wasn't, we didn't want to dig up the entire slab of the floor. So we rerouted the header around the building, ran a new line from well number two up to the front of the building and tied it into the new header. Now we've got everything backfilled. All the piping is done. As soon as they rehab number two, we'll have it back online. But, long story, but everything is in better shape now than it was before. And there are no more active well lines under the building foundation.
Did the screen just get clogged over years or was it because you had dug it up and put it back and loose dirt got in there?
No. What we think, because there's iron in well two, but there's not iron in the groundwater. So thinking the check valve went bad in the old pump and it was actually allowing us to backflow down well two while it wasn't running. So during the period two wasn't being used is when the iron built up. They also said some of that can just come from the soils. It may not be iron. It may be calcium or some other mineral. So whatever it is, we have to knock it off the screen. So they're gonna come in and surge it this week. We'll get another video of it. And hopefully, we can get it to at least 95% clear.
It's stainless, I imagine, isn't it?
Yes. Yes. And being stainless, you can pretty much tell when it's got something on it. It should be just shiny and clean, but it's got a lot of what looks like iron and calcium scale all over it. In some places, you can't see the screen at all. And that could be part of what happened to the well pump. If it was running dry, when you start sucking up air with the water, it puts a really good load on the pump. So a pump can sit there and pump water constantly all day long, but when you start introducing air to it, it acts like cavitation and it can really do damage to the pump.
Anytime you're talking about work under pavement, be it road pavement or under the building, I start thinking about the new paving work we're gonna be doing on some of our roads in town and what might be going on under there. Is there any way that we can identify the most probable leaks under some of the roads that are scheduled for repaving?
I wish I could say yes, but there's really not. If you get into an area where you know that the lines are old...
Which we will be.
Like galvanized, then it might make sense to replace all those laterals as you go down. But some of those lines that are 30 years old have another 20 years left on them. So we sometimes end up with problems with new lines, like at Coventry Farms. We had three lines out there go bad since it went in. And what is it, 10 years old now? Phase two. And then you got other parts of town where we hardly have to dig a hole, including like Valley Road. We've dug a couple over there, but we've dug just as much over Coventry. So there's, the mains would be the big focus so that in an area where we, I would love to get ahold of 213 from the bridge up to Cross Street. Those mains are rolled steel and we know the condition that they're in. It's not an emergency, but it was about, was it 11 years ago when one of the mains sprung a leak? I had water coming up under the trees on the sides of 213 under the curb. It was just, it was a mess. And then when we went to dig it up, we found out it was under 15 inches of rebar reinforced concrete. So it took us from like 11 o'clock at night to 4 o'clock in the morning just to get the initial hole through the street. So in situations like that, yes. If they would've shut down the bridge for a month or two, that's something that I, and we had noticed that's something I was gonna look at having done, but thankfully, they didn't have to shut the bridge down. So mixed emotions for me, but I think the bridge not being shut down was much more advantageous than having the opportunity to do the war main. We repaired a leak in the alley up behind Pardo's. It showed up. It looked much worse than it was. It was a leak that, it was coming up out of the ground about an inch high, about as big around as your pinky. But it was enough, because of the grading up there on Hattaway, to make it look worse because it wasn't just running down the gutter and into the drain. It was kind of flattening out and spreading. So that's fixed. And all the old lines down at the Marina, the used to service, the restaurant and the Marina and the docks have all been abandoned at the main. So the new line that's running in there is online servicing everything and there's nothing else in there to worry about. And that's all I have.
I wanted to ask you something. I see Porrellini Law Group for a review, Third Quarter Hospital. Is Mr. Porrellini back on?
Bill probably has more information than me on that. That's not something I'm in the loop on.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, we will, can someone make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, Bill, I'll move to adjourn on this extremely interesting report.
That's right. It's always scintillating.
I learn something every time.
He's a fountain of, literally a fountain of knowledge.
Yes.
Okay, we are officially, actually, all those in favor of adjourning. We unanimously adjourned at 7:42 P.M.
Yes.
Can you send Dale Wintersall in here, please?
It's a good question. Wake him up.
I know. I signed the check.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the Mayor and Council meeting to order at 7:43 P.M. The first item on our agenda this evening is to approve the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of October 15, 2018.
I'll move to approve the Mayor and Council meetings, October 15, 2018 as submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record show we unanimously approve the minutes. Operating funds on hand this evening for the town of Chestertown. Our total operating cash on hand for unrestricted use is $1,374,093.62. We also have in a restricted use fund, $203,053.23 for capital initiatives specific to the Marina. The next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills.
I'll move to pay.
You sign some of them, Dave.
I second that, that's fine.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looks like we unanimously agree to pay the bills, which brings us to the town managers.
All right.
Right there.
I sent some ordinances out to you guys. I'll just take them in the order that I sent them. The first is ordinance number five, 2018, an ordinance declaring certain real property in Chestertown to be surplus and authorizing the sale thereof. And there's a few whereas's and therefore's, but basically, we're declaring surplus, a tiny sliver of property at 328 Cannon Street that's basically surrounded by the same property owner on either side. It was a, an abandoned entrance to the lot that we call the town yard now. And the other one is a piece of land that we have, a commercial piece of land on the beginning of Flatland Road that you start up the hill. The grassy area there in front of Cochran Glass was bought by the town for $10,000 in 2002 from the Sprinkle Estate. The idea was that someday we'd have a basketball facility there, a recreation facility for the region, and we have accomplished that to a greater extent than we ever thought. So I've talked with the owners who are sort of landlocked by that parcel, as you can see, if you go up the hill, and they seem interested. And as far as I'm concerned, following the policy of the town, which is don't own any more land that's untaxed than you possibly have to, this is also a surplus or excess piece of property. You don't have to do anything about it now. This would be the night that you would introduce it. And we'll discuss it again on the 19th. And if you enact it, it'll become effective on December 10th, at which time I will go out and get appraisals on these properties. We have the offer on the Cannon Street sliver already, but the, and I think the real estate thing will show that that's full value right there, what they've offered, but we'll have that done. And also, the commercial piece, which is probably in a different category altogether. I still haven't finalized the Cannon, the College Avenue sale that I, where I wanted to construct a new, a new house for a deserving family on that lot, but that's, this will even out the surplus property that we put in the budget. And I'm, I just sort of tripped over it when this other property was asked about. So do you have any objections to introducing the ordinance tonight?
Both of those ordinance have the same number?
No, the next one, that's probably wrong on the agenda, but right as I just read it.
It seems strange because it's apples and oranges, one's one thing and one's...
No, they're actually different on here.
They're different numbers.
I don't know where you're seeing it.
I got, oh, five and six, okay. I was just looking at the 2018.
It's ironic because last week I started...
You got it right, Bill.
I was numbering higher than that, but we found that there was no number five. So do we vote on introductions?
No.
Okay, we don't vote on it. I'm sorry, Jen.
The other one.
No, that's okay.
The other one's a little more... We don't need a hearing on both of them though, just on the one?
No, only on zoning hearings. And the one I'm about to discuss now will, will require a hearing because it's about zoning.
The other one doesn't?
Does not. And as I say, it's far in advance of anything actually happening. When we do sell the property, if and when we do, we also make a public announcement that it's been sold. And I don't even know why, that's not in our charter. That's, there was a state case in Ocean City about that. Alex Raisin always told me, this is what you have to do. And then Stuart Barrow started telling me, this is what you have to do. So we just do it. Second one is an ordinance number six, 2018, making certain text change amendments to chapter 170-46 and 170-87 of the zoning ordinance. And I'll make this as simple as possible. When we annexed the, the new business campus, we promised the owners that we would work up a mixed-use zone there. And we sat down with them on several occasions. Case and I took the light industrial two district and we added the uses that would be applicable or in conformance with that sort of mixed use as well as some zoning. What you won't find in here from C3 are drive-throughs or convenience stores. So it's a mixed use. It has a lot of commercial uses in it that would be compatible with the neighborhood and, and industry, which is, you know, you don't see very often. The owners of the property are very pleased with what we've done. And it also expands the signage for, for, within that district and elsewhere, for professional office outside of historic district, outside of the historic district. The problem is that professional office zone was created for downtown and where there are small lots and small buildings and historic districts. So we, we wrote this so that they'll have a little healthier signage for their properties. So I just think this is, it's great that planning, planning commission vetted it, liked it, and so there's nobody in dispute. We will have to have, if we introduce it tonight, at our next meeting, we'll have it, 7 o'clock, we'll have a, a meeting about that, public can attend, comment on it. You'll see the different uses on here. And if you want to know more about it, you look up C3 or ask me and I'll help you look up C3. This allows, in the residential category, it allows residences above and behind the permitted use. So if you have a commercial use downstairs, you can either build residence above it or behind it. But the front of the building downstairs would be commercial or industrial as the zoning. I think it's gonna be great, when you think about it, we annexed this property in from a multi-use zone in the county, Crossroads Commercial. So that's apples and apple, really, even though it's got all sorts of fruit in it. It's apples and apples. That's what you're supposed to do, by the way, when you annex something and the county agrees and you say, we've got a similar zone, you should endeavor to make it a similar zone, which we're doing here. So hopefully, after a couple of weeks, we'll have, we'll meet on this. And any questions in between, please call me.
Are you gonna put the street signs up?
I'm sorry?
There are big signs.
Oh, no, they'll never, they'll always have those temporary signs. Yes, of course. The, those are temporary signs for the truckers and delivery people. When the roads get built, they'll have all the signs. Both Warner and Hack.
I was gonna ask Mr. Goodall, where did the name come from?
Warner is a family, is a, I think it's a family connection.
It must've been. I know what his wife-baited name was, and that's not it, so.
Warner Brothers, it'd be like, maybe we'll attract Hollywood here.
No, I think it's fine. I just was wondering if you, if you knew. People have asked me, quite frankly, and not just my own curiosity.
So it seems redundant, but there's a notice of a public hearing in here for November the 19th at 7:00 P.M. That was the third thing on my agenda.
Jen, I will note for the record, I did read it this time, that it's 7 o'clock, I will be here on time.
I will send you a reminder too, I promise.
Will I be able to pull a Starbucks out there?
Not you personally, but I'd have to see that.
A group of investors.
It would allow.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd allow most retail, except for things like drive-throughs, which, which get bigger and involve a lot of stacking in lanes where people wait to get through. So those two were not in, not considered to be really along the lines of what they're thinking. So the other thing I'm squeezing in here is the Dickens permits came in today, the permit request, and I know they've been working hard because they had a meeting here this afternoon. So it's pretty complex, really, right now at first look, case here. And if you want to take all the time that I devote to this, because I'm not too familiar, it's got a lot of, and I just want to make sure that the chief has been part of this process, because it's got a lot of closures in the three different dates. And some look like they follow others, so it seems complex.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much what we did last year. I know that Chief has met with the Chair of 5K and agreed again to let us, and we really appreciate it, because it's a nightmare for him and his crew, but it makes the run really interesting for people to run through town. So that's part of it, that's one of the permits. Friday night is pretty simple for us because we're just closing one block of High Street for the fire pits and enhancing, first Friday, closing the same streets to parking that we did last year to allow the horse carriages to have a little room to maneuver. And then Saturday, closing the 200 blocks of High Street from Cross down to Queen. And that's gonna be the heart of the festival, but with activities going up another block of High Street and going in Cross Street so that everybody kind of gets entertainment and, and things like that. The one change this year is that because we are putting up a very large tent for the vendors, that'll kind of take up the middle of the street, we are gonna have to close the 200 block of High Street from Waters Road to Queen Street Friday morning, because that's when the tent company needs to come in and takes them two hours or so to construct it. And then we need time to put the tables up, decorate it. So that's the, the only big change that I noticed from last year to this year is that. And if the tent shrinks for some reason, we'll come back and amend that so that we don't have to close the street. And, you know, but we're trying to make it so that, and I need to talk to Chief about this, that the tents will be down at the end of High Street next to Queen, and then there're gonna be some food tents set up near the White Swan, which would mean we'd have to close the whole block. If we could do even a one-way lane so that people could go down and take a left on Waters Road into the circle, they could get as far as Court Street. But otherwise, the whole block would be closed all day Friday, so that we can prepare for Saturday events. I'll probably have to close again.
Have you guys spoken with all the folks on High Street that would be affected?
Not yet. Last year, we did kind of distribute, you know, information sheets about it, and we did it for the homeowners on Queen and Cannon too.
Yeah, that's good.
Because we do restrict parking on Queen and Cannon. You'll see it's complicated. We tried, we looked at the street where it was narrow. It's narrow when we had the horse carriages meeting traffic. We asked people not to park on the street. When it's a wider part of High Street, there's plenty of room to park and still have the horse carriages in traffic. So that's all the same as last year.
When you talk to, when you said you talked to people on Queen, you realize that people who live on High have driveways that go in off of Queen.
The people who live on High...
On High.
...goes on Queen.
Have a driveway that goes, the driveway is on Queen.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, Queen is never closed. It's just, don't park on Queen so the horse carriage can make the turn. It's a tight turn from Court, from Church Alley to Queen Street. And then they go left on High, then they're kind of in the clear. And then we don't want parking on Water Street at Cannon, because that's another tight turn. We didn't want cars coming in. So that's the place where we cone it and we have no parking, just to make sure the good sightlines.
The reason I brought it up tonight, because it's, you have that 30-day requirement on road closures, so I think you should just go with this. They're telling us in general how this is gonna work. And if you want more specifics, you can see it on the permit, as long as it's been involved in similar last years. I just wanted to get as many threshold items.
I appreciate it, because it's just kind of jumped out like, oh my gosh, it's...
Yeah, 30 days.
...years before the event. And Linda and I realize we do need to go to all the shops on High Street. They're gonna be the most effective, just to say, we're gonna close it the least we can, but it looks like we're gonna close it for most of it.
Well, just from experience, a couple of issues we had with the Tea Party Festival this past May, it would be nice if the street closures were published in the Kent News, really. You know, and then it's public. And I think we're gonna do that with the Tea Party Festival this year. You know, it's a courtesy to, to our residents and businesses.
We could consider purchasing an ad to help them get that word out, because the media's been really good about carrying our press releases, so we could, we could certainly purchase order page or something to lay out attention. But we also like the idea of trying to stuff a piece of paper in people's doors and mailboxes just so they'll have a written note from us that, thanks for your patience, but it's gonna be fun, but you're gonna be inconvenienced a little bit, and we appreciate it.
I think it'd be nice if we made a motion to approve this, maybe pending further conversations with the business owners and affected residents, something, something along those lines. But I can't, I don't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, we're gonna approve the Dickens of Christmas weekend pending finalization of, you know, all your details.
Notifications to businesses on High Street and neighbors affected by parking changes.
Yeah. We, we never had any problems before, but last year, we had a couple issues.
All right, so there's a motion. Did you get that, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you read what you have?
That's so cool.
Do you really want to?
No, 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 no. I, I'm not questioning what you've got. I just want to make sure we were all on the same page, because it kind of came from three different people.
Sure, that the permit is approved pending the businesses and resident owners along High and Queen Street and parts of Cannon will be notified about the street closures.
Okay, and then David, do you second it? Do you still stand by your second?
I still stand by it.
She really did get it, too.
If you're being picky, then I would say about any street closures and parking bans.
Okay.
Because my Cannon's never gonna be closed, it's a permanent one.
Gotcha. Okay.
Do you still stand by your second?
I'm still with it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think this is very nice the way you've done this.
So we unanimously approve that pending the approvals cited in the motion.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
Mayor's report, I just want to report that down rigging, we actually had down rigging weekend, which I know you guys don't all see what I see, but it was touch and go for many months as to whether that was gonna happen. It happened. I think the folks that came down there, despite some challenging weather, especially on Saturday, the crews that we had hired to do the work on that facility, and we kind of gave them a deadline of down rigging, really, really stepped up in the last couple of weeks there. Particularly Bramble was phenomenal. Chester River Landscaping came in, did incredible work. Yurkey's really stepped up. Who else is down there? Just, they're, all the contractors that we had down there really stepped up. It was really neat because they were all local and they've all been to down rigging. And I think that helped really motivate them. And as a result, the Marina was as nice as it's been in at least 30 years, if not more.
I would say forever.
And it was the first, it was the first time as a Sultana person that we ever had big, we actually had really good crowds down there on Sunday. And it was honestly the first time where, as the Sultana guy, we had big crowds on the docks, and I felt like everything was cool. And I wasn't, didn't have to be stressed about, you know, a piling collapsing on somebody. So that was really nice, and we got some great feedback from the boats, from the crews of all the visiting ships, and especially from residents and visitors, many of whom that hadn't been down there in a long time. And the last time they saw the facility, it was either in its decrepit state or they'd been down there when the ground was all just turned up and it looked like a bomb had hit the place. So kudos to our contractors. I know it wasn't charity work, because we are paying those guys a fair amount of money, but they really stepped up to the plate. And it was, you know, from a... but they really stepped up to the plate, and it was, you know, from a facility standpoint, it was a great, great event. And kind of along those lines, I did make a big fundraising ask, kind of just to the general public. I think we've gotten about $20,000 in pledges and donations, which is a great start. I just want to keep that out there, like as the end of the year approaches, if you're a person that can afford to make a donation, this is a worthy project for the community that will benefit the community hopefully for many decades. One of the things that you can't even really see when you go down there, is when you're in that newly paved parking lot, you don't realize that you are standing on a parking lot that's two feet higher, almost anywhere you are than it's ever been for decades. And in fact, on Saturday, when we had that nor'easter, that whole area would have been under a foot of water just last year. So the fact that it stayed dry is, I think, something that most laypeople don't really appreciate, but that's where about half of the money and the work on this project went into, was raising the grade of that whole area, so that it is now as floodproof as it can be without raising it, you know, ridiculously high amount. So thanks to everybody who helped make that happen. It was a really successful event. Even on the day that it was, the weather was challenging, what that rain actually can sometimes do is it drove everyone that was here to the indoor events. So almost every indoor event was packed to the gills, and I think some of the businesses did really well also as a result, because sometimes that weather drives people like into the coffee shop, into the restaurants. And so a lot of people are like, I'm so sorry, it was a little bit rainy, and I was like, it's fine. The docks, we have three docks and a boardwalk and like no big holes down there. Like that's what I was the most concerned about. So thanks to everybody that helped make that happen. That's it for me. Why don't we go ahead and start with Mr. Stetson here on our Word Report.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm honored to be going first here.
You know it.
I did visit the down rigging on Friday and Saturday. I've seen bigger crowds, and the weather was not, and unfortunately, I missed the Sunday, which apparently was the.
It was beautiful.
It looked like a beautiful weather, and it should have been nice, but I think what you said is true. At least they came and they spent more time in the stores than they probably would have been, so that worked good for the merchants. I was out last Friday for First Friday, and it went well. We had a very nice crowd.
Yep.
The weather cooperated for the first hour and a half, and then it started to rain. I did go into the new pub, that's where JR was, and he had a fair amount of people in there. It's amazing how many people I talked to didn't even know he exists or is open, so.
Yep.
That's one of the reasons I'm bringing it up here now, that people will know that he is there, and he was very gracious, thanked me for stopping in, and he didn't cop my beer, but otherwise it was nice.
Yeah, so just so you know, I think the plan is for that bar to be open in its current iteration till about like the holiday season, and then they're actually going to close down again from like January, February, maybe into March a little bit, because that's like a slower time in general. So they're going to continue to rehab the interior, then reopen in the spring with what they hope to finally be. So that's why it's called limited time offer, or limited time only.
Yeah, they just have a temporary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Temporary signs. It was, and he gave me, I got a brief what they hope to do or may do, but they talk like it's in flux and not really sure what they're going to do anymore. But anyway, people, if you just want a nice drink, stop in there. Everything else is fine in the fourth. We're still waiting for, people that use the dog park are waiting for Mr. Jay Yurkies to build the exercise equipment, which he promised a year ago. He's been very busy, and I, hopefully he'll have some spare time now that he can give us that work. I don't like to bug him too much, because he's doing it free.
Yeah, right.
Although we pay for the material. But everything else is fine in the fourth. I'm overjoyed to see the size of that building of Dixon out there. It just really, you know there's going to be more employees and more people working and more families moving in here, so Chestertown and the fourth ward's looking up. It may not be the hotbed of Chestertown, but it's the warm bed of Chestertown.
It's the warm bed of Chestertown. Well, the third ward certainly is always a hotbed of activity. Over the past seven weeks, we've been spending a lot of time on voter registration, voter activity, getting the vote out, informing people. We've been hosting information sessions with Jesse Colvin. We had the fortunate opportunity to have Logic Cummins come over and educate us on some things about the process and how things are going over in Washington. I want to always commend the neighborhoods in the third ward for how they're maintaining their properties, especially as we move into the fall and the winter seasons. People are still taking care of things and making the neighborhood look good. I did get a chance to go downtown to the down rigging as a casual observer. I haven't been down for any of the construction or anything related to it, and I wanted to go around. I'm glad there were not a lot of people down there, because I got a chance to really, really see what it looks like, and having a vision of what it's going to be as we move forward and making that place a grand showpiece for our town. So I'm encouraging people to go down there, just to walk around. And it was cool to walk around in the rain too, because I didn't know until you just mentioned that the grading work had already been done.
That's right.
So there was no puddles, there were no puddles, there was nothing to indicate any type of flooding, even though the water was coming in. So I'm impressed by what's been done down there, and looking forward to more things to come out of it. I attended also, along with Kay and some others, a workshop on nonprofits, so I can be better equipped to help serve those different organizations in our town. And I want to announce an opening of a new business coming up in the third ward called Confidence Beauty Salon. The owner, Nikki Johnson, who was a young lady hairdresser, opened up her own shop up on the high end of High Street, and if you need a cut, color, waves, shave, go see Nikki. And that's my report.
I think she can do something for my hair.
Oh, she can, man. Put that shine on it.
Shine it up.
Those days are long gone, Mr. Stetson.
Put that shine on it.
All right, how about Ward Two, Linda?
Okay, well, I'm glad you two enjoy Ward Two, where everything's happening.
Yes, it is. I concede, I concede.
Seed Highway with a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Have we heard anything?
We just sent another packet off with the mayor's signature on it, just reminding them that it's a big issue for us.
Okay. And the concert series starts at the, at Sumner Hall on November ele, I'm losing it, November 10th at 7:00 PM. That'll be the first blues concert. And then there is an email out, People's Bank Holiday Gingerbread House Display. If you want to enter a gingerbread house, you can call People's Bank and make arrangements. In the email, it was call Henrietta or Dawn, and it's 410-778-3500. And that's going to be during Dickens of a Weekend, which is truly neat in there. People's Bank should be commended for all of the, you know, really big events that they do for the town. KRM is booking holiday parties at the bank, 211 High Street. And we still need volunteers for the Tea Party Festival, and I want to ask something, because Bob couldn't answer my question for the utilities commission.
Oh, wait, he recintillating, never mind.
Forlini Law Group Review Third Quarter Hospital.
Yes.
So is Mr. Forlini back on the?
And I think, yes.
Hospital case?
I'll tell you why. He's drafted a couple of letters for me about the, about the hospital oil spill and the monitoring of it, and that's what the science report are all about. They're very complex, they're 70 or 80 pages long. But what we're finding is that the Sentinel wells are having detection levels now that are below the level that triggers the document, but they're having detections. And they also have changed the way they, three things, I'm sorry, there's, they're getting ready to add new wells, which for us, for Michael Forlini and I violates the spirit of how we're all going to be in this together, how, you know, we'll have this transparency. And the third thing is they're using some sort of gel process now, which skews the current tests versus the other tests. So they get a different sort of result. Now, I wasn't really, I think we need to get to the heart of the matter. I think we have to say what we mean, and I want to bring it to the council in a fashion that is understandable to laymen, i.e. the hospital here, the hospital across the water, and MDE, because something has happened there and it needs to be addressed. There's no, there'd be no reason why, we wouldn't know why two more monitoring wells have to go in. There would be no reason why you would change the methodology for testing without telling us. That's transparency. And the third thing is, when you get detection levels way out by Campus Avenue, even if they're minute, they may be the soldiers, the foot soldiers of a coming army. So I'm sorry that you've got the bills, but he's done a great job with the three basic letters that he's composed. One in March, when we got the March report, one in July when we got the July, and one just recently when we got the September report. It pays to be alert.
Where are the two new monitoring wells that they've installed?
That's not even, that's not even discussed, where and why. Where would you put them and why? And we have Sentinel Wells, we have four Sentinel Wells actually in the area of Campus Avenue. That's our Maginot Line, if that's the right analogy. Well, number eight's always been there. We turned that off years ago, so we wouldn't suck the whole mess towards Campus Avenue. The other three are right on Campus Avenue, right on the block. And they shouldn't have any detections, and that miracle detergent that guy used, they've stopped testing for that, but that showed up as late, I think, as the March or July report, as still being in the water, which creates those byproducts that Bob always talks about. So I'm just being aware, I'm just ready to bring something to you, but I want, I don't want it to be the big alarm. I want it to be calm, I want it to be, I want it to get results.
Bill, if I recall correctly, the agreement with MDE and the hospital is that we would have been full partners in this?
Yes, partners, exactly. That was the agreement between MDA and the hospital, that we'd be, we involved, and our agreement with the hospital made it even stronger. Besides the fact that the Sentinel Wells, if they alarm ever, I think it's .012, then that means they go back to removing product.
What are the levels at compared to the level that would trigger that?
They're well below, they're just, they're barely.
Trace amounts.
Well, they're a little bit above trace, but you don't expect them to be there.
Right. And these are trace amounts that were not there six months ago?
No, never there before, showed up in March.
Got you.
So Bob is involved in all of this?
Yeah, Bob, yeah. Instead of having Michael, Michael's not here anymore. He's in Baltimore, he does his own practice. He's really a genius on this sort of thing. So basically, I send Bob a copy of everything I send to Michael, so he's aware of it. He doesn't read all his emails, and I said that publicly.
He doesn't.
I shouldn't have, but he's a very busy man, and boy is he talented and smart, but I wish he'd read his emails more. Anyway.
Mr. Forlini or Bob?
Bob.
Oh, okay.
But when Bob gets alarmed, he gets really alarmed, so anyway, that's where we are on that. That's what that bill is about.
Okay. Thank you. I have one more thing to add, and I guess everybody knows by now that Bennetts is no longer pumping gas. And I had a talk with Wayne, and due to the tank insurance and Royal Farms across the bridge taking business, Royal Farms here taking business, they're not pumping gas any longer, but they're still doing repairs. I told him, I said, Wayne, I said, do you realize there are women in Kent County who have never pumped their own gas? I said, I know, I know, I haven't pumped my own gas for.
Really?
Oh, my gosh.
Because you go, you've been going.
I make sure, you know, I either fill up when I leave here, or I went all the way to Harrington, Delaware on Tuesday, and came back to get gas here at Bennetts, and the yellow tape was all around the gas pumps, and he said, we're already out of gas.
Why do you do that?
Huh? I'm loyal to Chestertown.
You just don't want to pump the gas.
No, I thought maybe you just didn't want to pump your own gas.
And I don't want to turn left, you know, if I'm in the middle of the intersection.
I'm sorry, is Bennetts no longer selling gas, or it's no longer pumping?
They're no longer, except for these ones. They're not, they're not selling it or pumping it.
Okay, okay.
Neither.
That's a good question, huh?
I think you're perpetuating a stereotype by not pumping your own gas, so I think you ought to have a lesson on that.
Well, I had to, I had to this week.
Okay, good.
All right. First word?
Good. I also went to the Down Rigging Deluge, and it was wonderful.
Yes.
And I think everybody there really had a good time. Do have two requests. One, of course, is if everybody who hasn't yet voted, get that out there and vote tomorrow. And the other is if anybody out there is still doing a rain dance, you know, we can stop now.
No kidding.
But yes, the Marina looks wonderful.
Yes.
Really, really pleased with that.
I don't know if anybody knows this, but a few years ago, the mayor was standing down there and looking at the Marina, and he says, this whole area's got to come up two feet. I said, what? Are you crazy? I mean, what kind of money would that take? He said, it doesn't matter, it's got to come up two feet. You know, you were right. It's.
Well, it would have made no sense to fix all that and just have it keep flooding, because that's the level that we were at, so. And that's, actually, the funders were also telling us that as soon as we started seriously talking to them, it was like, you have to raise this by two feet, like you say, because we're not going to fund a new bulkhead that floods three times a week. So it's kind of all tied together. Yes, that made the project three times more ambitious than it otherwise would have been, just fixing three docks and putting everything where it was.
It would be interesting to gauge how long it would take to need to be dredged again after the seawall and.
Sooner than you think, but we have a spoil, we have a spoil site now, it'll go much easier next time. And there's other parts of the waterfront that we should do.
Yep.
We really should. The Wilmer Park should be dredged again. To put a High Street won't be long before it needs, it sweeps off the river and comes to the Kent County side. You sand on the other side and mud on this side.
Yeah. All right. Before we go to requests for the public, for which there were none, I have a letter from Bob Knapp from the Lions Club, who'd put on another great Halloween parade on, turned out it was on Sunday. But it was very interesting, because they had initially requested the stage, and Sultana also requested the town stage for down rigging. We ended up bringing the town stage down to down rigging, so the Lions Club always wants this A-stage where the judges can be. So they brought in this big flatbed truck. Were you guys on this? Because I couldn't make it.
We were, Linda and I.
But they didn't have any stairs to go up to it, so our street crew really stepped up to the plate. I think Bob Ingersoll had a lot to do with this also, and basically built a custom staircase going up to the flatbed, so that somebody like you guys could get up and test it out. So this is a really nice letter from Bob Knapp, who has been organizing this parade for the Lions Club for years. And it says, Dear Bill, on behalf of the Chestertown Lions Club and Washington College SGA, I would like to thank you and all your staff for helping us with the 2018 Chestertown Halloween Parade. Your provision of the stairs is instrumental to the safety of the people on the judges' stand. Special thanks to Mr. Tom Sappington and his crew for building a new set of stairs specifically designed for the judges' stand and this event. As always, the town's contributions and efforts directly contributed to the total success of the parade. Thanks, and we look forward to working with you next year. So Tom Sappington and his crew, I think they do a lot of great things for the community that kind of goes under the radar, because you just kind of show up and there's a stage. Well, that took a ton of work setting up, and it takes a ton of work setting, taking it down. And when there's two stages operating concurrently, it's double the work on a weekend. So those guys deserve a lot of credit for just kind of. So, those guys deserve a lot of credit for just kind of quietly stepping up to the plate a lot. All right. There were no requests to be on the agenda this evening. Are there any questions or comments from the audience this evening? The giant, huge, chaotic crowd.
Don't all of you speak at once, huh?
All right.
They make you come up here.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll be
See ya.